Saturday, January 7th, 2023. It is nine o'clock in the morning. This is a workshop meeting for the board, and we will not be entertaining any public comment. Before we get started, I just have a couple of reminders for the board. We have a busy month this month. Obviously, we have our workshop today. We have our business meeting on Monday. On the 10th, there's a Falmouth net meeting, which I understand Doug and Sam will be attending. And I'm filled by Courtney Burt. On the 11th, we will have our community forum at the Lawrence School from 5:30 to 7:00. On the 16th, just a reminder that the articles for Texas is nine o'clock. On the 18th, there's the Substance Use Roundtable, which originally I had signed up for. I'm looking for someone to replace me as I will be out of state as of the 13th.
What's the date?
The 18th at 2:00. And that is with Senator Sumiran. And then we have another meeting on, another business meeting on the 30th. And we have held the 23rd, and we may very well need to use the 23rd as a meeting. So just put that in your books. I think we might have some warrant work to do that night. So hold the 23rd as well.
Can I mention MMA meetings starting on the 20th?
Yes, please.
Which is the collection of all of the municipal leaders around the state. I've been to it many years, and this is the first time, at least it's not going to be on Zoom, held at the Heinz, you mentioned, Senator. I'll be going just for Friday. I've gone for the entire, for both days. The second day is when they do the articles that come up that represent policy changes relative to municipal government. So if anybody can go and vote on behalf of the town, you get a little card to, you know, register the interests of our municipality. MIAA meets, that's our insurance agency, meets on Saturday morning also. So those are the things I'm going to be missing. But the Cape Cod municipal leaders association will be meeting before the dinner on that Friday. So it's a, that's an opportunity to get together with all of the legislative, excuse me, the municipal leaders here on Cape Cod. So that's an event that's coming up that you could add to the calendar.
Thank you.
Relatively important meeting, too, because we're probably going to vote a letter to the EEP on the changes, the changes to Title V and watershed permits.
That's likely to come up on Saturday because that's when the MMA meets, an official business meeting, and when they actually vote the various positions they want to take. So it's an important meeting. If you go on Saturday, you'll get a chance to hear the new governor speak and the lieutenant governor speak. So it's a great opportunity to kind of get a sense of where the rest of the municipalities and state government leaders are in the state as it relates to how we run our business here.
Anything else that anyone wants to add to the calendar?
I'm trying to move some things around for the 18th. I may be able to cover you on that.
Okay.
I'll let you know.
If you would, that would be great.
But I need to look at a few things first.
I have that on my calendar, too.
Oh, awesome.
Wasn't ready just to commit 100%.
I'm sorry?
Where is it?
The library.
Yeah.
2:00, I believe it's in the Harmon Room. Anything else to add to the calendar? Really full this week, this month. Okay, thank you. And now we will start our budget workshop, and we will start with Mr. Johnson's job.
Good morning. As I mentioned earlier, I don't, I kind of wish I could sit at the table and give the presentation, but in terms of my line of sight, it's going to work better for me to see you, to stand up here. So this morning, we are going to discuss, this is sort of a follow-up of the budget presentation that I made on December 19th. This morning, we're focusing on department needs that are not included and not funded within the level service budget that was presented on the 19th, and that was, has been submitted in writing to the board. So I'm going to be leading off. We've been talking about the fire department staffing needs and accommodating the construction of the new Hatchville Station. So that's going to be, the lion's share of this presentation really is talking about fire department staffing needs. And then I'll also talk about some of the other department needs that are also, the board may want to be, you know, thinking about as we continue our long-term discussions and strategic planning about how we fund the town's needs in the years ahead. So with that, let me jump right into the fire department staffing needs. So I want to do a quick overview of sort of the sequence of events that brought us to where we are today. In the spring of 2020, we were talking about the new model of staffing requiring two fire department personnel, personnel on every ambulance, every engine, and that drove additional staffing needs that ultimately led to an override to hire eight additional firefighters. That same year, we also included two additional positions within the budget. The stated goal at that time was to increase the daily start of shift staffing from 14 to 16. The budget that we were, that we were planning for, the FY21 budget, included 74 positions. And I'm speaking now, I should clarify, these are the positions that count towards shift strength. So those are the personnel that go out on engines and ambulances. It doesn't include the chief, administrative staff, et cetera. And those, so those 74 positions were needed to operate the five existing stations. In the summer of 2021, the select board set a goal to staff six stations when the Hatchville Station is completed. And that raises a new staffing challenge that we're talking about today. So let me go through that in some detail. And it should be obvious, but I'll state it anyway, that when I get into the details of what the fire department staffing needs are, I'm not making these up. These are coming from Chief Smith and his command staff. And they're, you know, they're very well considered and have been thoroughly analyzed by the fire department and the chief. So I'm going to run through a couple of different scenarios to provide a clear understanding of what the staffing requirements are based on different station situations. So with a five-station configuration, so we're staffing five stations, the minimum requirements are shown in that first column. Six are required at headquarters, two at Woods Hole, two at North Falmouth, two at West Falmouth, four at East Falmouth. And that's, you know, in that scenario, we're talking about before the Hatchville Station comes online. So that is a total of 16. That 16 means every day at the start of shift, that's how many fire department personnel, firefighters, lieutenants, and captains that are needed to adequately operate the five stations. And that means if we have less than that, for whatever reason, we bring people in on overtime to get to that 16. Now, when we start looking at fulfilling the board's goals with respect to a six-station model, what does that look like? You know, we add two. The minimum that you can have to staff any station is two. And I want to distinguish that from what a good staffing model or a robust staffing model or a preferred staffing model might look like. The chief would tell you, he would much rather have 20 at the start of shift for, if we're operating six stations as opposed to 18. In terms of, again, what's driving the immediate need for staffing? And would we need this additional staff if we weren't building a new fire station? Again, the answer is, we, the chief, would prefer to have 20 firefighters at the start of shift, even if we were operating five stations. So even as we look at a, we've talked about a future model where a new Northwest Fire Station is built to replace the, both the existing West Station and North Station. So that would bring us back down to five stations. Even under that scenario, the chief's preferred staffing levels would be 20. So, you know, what is, what is the upshot of all this? The new positions that we are seeking, and it's 14 additional positions is what, and I'll go through it in terms of how we get to that 14 again. Those new positions are beneficial and will result in improved fire and emergency medical services, whether we're operating five stations or six stations. The 14 additional fire department positions become a necessity if we are staffing six stations. So that's the distinction that I want to draw. So if we were, if there was no consideration of ever staffing six stations, we would be addressing this fire department staffing need much like we've been addressing other department staffing needs, incrementally, as we can fit it into the budget. But if we want to staff six stations, and we want to do it around the time that we anticipate the Hatchville Station is going to be completed and ready to operate, then we need to, we need to move quickly, and we need to fill those positions as quickly as we can. All right, so now let me, let me go through the number again. How is it that we get to 14 firefighters? We now have 78 budgeted firefighter lieutenant and captain positions. Now, in terms of what's required to get to your daily staffing requirements, and this is a snapshot as of July 1st of last year. We had four vacant positions at that time that were newly authorized, that were in the process of filling now. There were two vacant positions due to retirements and resignations. There were two positions that were recently filled, but they, those new employees were not fully trained and ready to count towards shift strength. They can't go out on an ambulance or an engine and be relied upon to meet basic services. We had four out on a long-term medical leave, one out on military leave. So that brought the 78 budgeted positions down to 65. The firefighters are divided into four groups with serving on a rotation on a 24-hour shift. So when we divide that 65 total by four, that gets us to an average of 16.25 per day. And then we, we then need to account for vacation leave, personal leave, and sick leave. That could be anywhere from zero, which is very unusual in a department this size, up to five, and occasionally even more than that, that might be out on vacation, personal, and sick combined. So as you can see, with the, with the, our current goal of 16 and staffing total budgeted positions of 78, you know, we're challenged just to get to 16. We have done very well recently in terms of meeting that goal, but it often does require overtime. So we are proposing 14 additional positions to reach our new goal of 18 firefighters at the start of shift. That would bring our budgeted total of firefighters, lieutenants, and captains to 92. And now these are not actual numbers. These are our informed estimates of what we will typically experience, which is to say, in a department this size, we're going to have retirements and turnover and resignations every year. We need to plan on that. So based on recent experience, you know, we're saying three is a pretty good rule of thumb for what we might experience in one year. Medical leave, typically, we've got a couple of people out on medical leave, so we've plugged in an allowance of two there and one on military leave. So that takes the 92 budgeted positions. And this is after all 14 of the new positions that we're proposing are filled. That would take us down to 86 available on a given, on a given day. And that's before we account for vacation leave, personal leave, and sick leave. And as we grow the department, you'll see I've adjusted that allowance. When we were talking about a budgeted positions of 78, I had an allowance of zero to five. When we raised that number to 92 budgeted positions, I'm suggesting that we need to plan an allowance of zero to six. So if 21.5 is the average, and we deduct from that, you know, four, five, six, you can see we're getting below the 18 that we need to operate six stations, and we would be filling those on an overtime basis. So it, it needs to be clearly understood that even with this proposal to hire 14 additional firefighters, the, because our daily staffing requirements are increasing, we are not going to see overtime go away. We're going to continue to see significant overtime in the fire department budget. But how much? And how does it, how do we, how do we evaluate that? So what, what this chart is looking at is offering a comparison to say, well, you know, what if we didn't hire 14 new firefighters? What if we hired 10 new firefighters? We deduct six for the vacancies and long-term leave. That gets us down, on the first column showing 14 new firefighters, gets us down to 21.5. And the column on the right with 10 new firefighters, it gets us down to 20.5. And then for discussion purposes, we plug in an allowance for vacation, personal, and sick leave of five. If we hire 14 new firefighters, that brings us to 16 and a half, typically showing up before overtime on a daily basis. In the scenario that we hire 14 firefighters, in the scenario that we hire 10 new firefighters, that's down to 15 and a half. So the number of overtime shifts on average per day, and, and these aren't actual averages, right? These are forecasts based on assumptions. They're estimates based on assumptions. But based on this, on these assumptions, we would be looking at one and a half overtime shifts per day if we hire 14 new firefighters, and two and a half shifts per day if we hire 10 new firefighters. We then show the annual cost at 365 days, $688,000 if we hire, of overtime, if we hire 14 new firefighters, and $1,147,000 if we hire 10. What's the cost of hiring four new firefighters? So the cost difference between these two scenarios, 14 and 10, what do the new firefighters, including benefits, cost us? $430,000. The savings of hiring the new firefighters is estimated at $459,000. I would call that within the margin of error. I'm not saying it's definitely going to save us money on overtime if we hire the additional firefighters, but I am saying there's no reason to expect a savings the other way. Furthermore, there's a reason to hire 14 and not 10, and that is, you know, we need to get to 18 every day. So if we have, you know, even if it's not every day, even if it's only, you know, 100 days per year, that we have to force firefighters to work overtime, you know, we'll put it out for voluntary first, but that doesn't always, you know, we don't always have firefighters available or interested in working voluntary overtime, which means the chief needs to resort to forcing overtime, which is the firefighters coming off of a 24-hour shift are required to stay. That's not something, you know, that's something that, you know, we've been, the fire department has been doing for a very long time, and it's not unusual. But it matters how often you do that, right? If we have every day, three or four firefighters being forced to work overtime, I don't know how long they're going to want to do that, right? That may, that may be a retention issue. So one of the important considerations that we need to look at in terms of what's a sustainable model for staffing six stations is we want to have enough people on board that we're not overly dependent on that forced overtime. And we, the chief and I, the chief and I believe that 14 is the right number, the right balance between overspending and overstaffing and not having enough that you're forcing too much overtime. So let's go through the cost of hiring a firefighter. And I will say that we are approaching this a little bit differently than we did with the last override, less conservatively. So the last override, we budgeted for a Step 2 paramedic. This estimate is based on a Step 1 firefighter. We do prefer to hire paramedics, but recent experience has been that most of the officers we hire are firefighters. There just aren't enough certified paramedics interested and available and applying for our positions. So we believe that it's, it's a reasonable assumption to assume that most of the firefighters we hire will be EMTs. And as I go through the proposal, you'll see that our funding plan does have flexibility so that if there's a paramedic available, we will still be able to hire them. We have a pension, a pension assessment here, which is an estimate that Finance Committee Mary Harris assisted us with in the first round. And I will say, this number may need to be adjusted. We have not updated this number for this round. But it's, you know, it shouldn't move by more than, you know, $500,000, $1,000,000 at the most.
Talking about the bottom line?
I'm talking about the pension assessment, the second line. So we have an allowance here for holiday pay, the education incentive at $1,000. That assumes an associate's degree for, for a typical hire. Some may have no education. Some may have a bachelor's, which would be slightly more, but that's a reasonable middle-of-the-road assumption. Our assumption for health insurance is essentially the most expensive health insurance option, which represents a cost to the town of $21,348, a uniform allowance of $850, and other insurance, including Medicare Line of Duty insurance and other insurances totaling $1,600 for a total recurring cost of $106,454. Multiplying that up by 14, that brings you to $1,490,000. Not included in here are the one-time costs for training and equipping new firefighters. But that's not something that we would be seeking recurring funding source, right? So we need a way to address those one-time costs, but we don't want to necessarily secure in FY24 the full amount of that one-time cost in the budget with recurring revenues that we need for other purposes. I do want to mention, it's not reflected in this, you know, firefighter estimate, but growing the department by 14 positions in terms of chain of command means that in all likelihood, the chief will want to promote four lieutenants from within. So that's not four additional positions. It's still the 14 new positions. But within that complement of 92, the chief would at some point be looking to promote four firefighters to lieutenant, and that increase is estimated at approximately $14,000 total for the four. Yes, absolutely.
When I look at the comparison between the other page, where it was $430,004, when you do the math and comparatively with our previous override for eight, which was almost at $1 million, it seems like this number, instead of 1,49, it should be 1.8.
Right, yeah. No, that's exactly right. That's a great point. And the, there are two reasons for that. One, as I mentioned, we're using a lower salary slot, an EMT versus a paramedic. But also, the first override actually did include one-time costs. And I'm not including that.
I see, thank you.
Yep. So we did hear some concerns from a few residents about this dilemma that we, the last time we voted in override, we voted in override, we raised the taxes, we raised the money. But in that first year, as, as we, as was predicted and as was explicitly discussed, you know, we didn't hire those firefighters on day one. So there was concern that, well, you know, where did that money go? And although legally, everything was done absolutely correctly, and that override increased the base revenues, and it provided a recurring funding source to fund the eight firefighters that ultimately were hired, there was concern that in that first year, the money didn't go where, you know, for its intended purpose. So that, you know, that creates a dilemma for us because we are, you know, in terms of our timeline, the, the construction for the new station, we've just received the bids. The bids are under budget. So we expect that construction to proceed. And of course, any large construction process, project, it's impossible to predict the exact timing of when that station's going to be ready to operate. At the earliest, it could be the spring of 2024. I think that's very optimistic. I think it's much more likely that it would be late 2024, and it could be early 2025. So, you know, we want to be able to use that station, of course, as soon as it's ready to be used. And the, the timeline to hire this many firefighters, it's going to take some time to hire this many firefighters. The civil service exit is something that, the petition has not yet been submitted to the legislature. And we know that with the police department's civil service exit, that sat there for over a year and was not approved. So we don't know, you know, if the legislature will move it or how quickly. So, and beyond the civil service, so we're, you know, we, we're looking in terms of all of the variables we're managing. How, how long is it going to take us to hire 14 firefighters? You know, that will depend if we, you know, we know we're not going to get out of civil service for the first year anyway. So that's part of our, our timeline. The Fire Academy itself generally is a six-to-nine-month delay the way things have been recently. Again, very difficult to predict. You know, the issue is that there's a Fire Academy every month, but they fill up. And depending on timing and, you know, which ones are filled, the chief and his staff have, you know, given me the best forecast they can. And they said, you know, plan on roughly six to nine months. Wait, once you make, once you hire a firefighter to get them into that Fire Academy. And they can't, they can't be deployed on an engine or an ambulance and count towards shift strength until they've completed that Fire Academy. So how long do we think it's going to take us? Our most, well, reasonable, optimistic estimate of how quickly we can hire 14 firefighters, seven by November of 2023, fully trained by November of 2024. And those are two different important dates because one is, when are we going to start paying them? When do we need the money? And the other is, when are they going to be available to count towards shift strength? And as you can see, it's a, it's a full year in between. And credit to the chief for expediting the process. The traditional approach in the past had been, you hire them, you wait for them to get through the Fire Academy, and then you have them do their in-service training, which takes, what, a few months, chief? A few months. So now the chief has, you know, revisited that process, given how critical it is for us to get new hires trained in on floor, and ready for floor strength right away. He's bringing them in a couple of months before they go to Fire Academy so that their training time after they complete Fire Academy is much reduced. Nevertheless, let me say it again. So if we were to get, if we were to have funding approved by April or May of this year, it would, you know, the quickest we could reasonably hope to hire, you know, firefighters, and we would be attempting to hire all 14 right away, but we still wouldn't expect to hire more than seven before November of '23. And they wouldn't be fully trained and available until November of '24. And then essentially, the same estimate for the following year, an additional seven hired by November of '24, fully trained by November of '25. So the, the point being, as you compare the hiring timeline and the construction timeline, it appears that the station will be ready to be operated before we have all 14 firefighters hired and fully trained, even if we get that funding and approval to start hiring as quickly as we can, starting in May of this year. So now I come back to this dilemma of, if there, if an override is going to be a part of this funding plan, how do we make sure that it, that the money that's raised in that first year for firefighters is actually spent on new firefighters? And through a dialogue, it was really, I have to credit Kathleen Barrio, the vice chair of the Finance Committee, with a solution to this dilemma, which is essentially a stabilization fund where any money that's not needed in the first year to pay wages and one-time expenses and, you know, associated costs of hiring new firefighters gets deposited into a fire department stabilization fund so that it can be used in future years for fire department overtime, one-time expenses, salaries, et cetera. So that, and that mechanism, in addition to making it So that, and that mechanism, in addition to making it very clear that all of the money raised is going to go to its intended purpose, it also gives us a little bit more flexibility in terms of the amount of the override that you might want to consider. So in this chart, we're showing estimates of, based on these assumptions that we just talked about, how much is it going to cost in each fiscal year as we ramp up to hire these fourteen firefighters? In the first year, if we hire the seven, based on the timeline that we just reviewed, we might be looking at salary and benefits of four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars estimated, and one-time equipping and training costs of another hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, for a total of six hundred thousand dollars. So what we could do is, whatever the override amount is, six hundred thousand dollars, we would make available for expenditure for the fire department for that year, and the balance would be appropriated into that stabilization fund. So then let's look, then let's look at year two. We're estimating that one million, one point two million would be needed for salary and benefits, another hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for equipment and training, because we're estimating hiring seven new firefighters in each fiscal year. So the total cost for that fiscal year is a million three eighty. Again, if the override amount is more than that, we would be depositing more money into the stabilization fund. In FY26, based on these hiring timeline assumptions, we would see the full impact of the cost of these firefighters, which by that point would be one million, one point, approximately one point six million. So we, you know, we started with that estimate based on FY24 rates, but those rates are going to go up each fiscal year. So I, I covered this out of order, the dilemma of how to secure the funding and the stabilization fund as the solution. So now let's talk about what the funding, what are the options to, to meet the need to fund fourteen firefighters? One option is to pursue an override of one point five million. That would, you know, more than cover the cost for year one, and because it's an override, it's in the tax levy, that amount grows by two and a half percent every year. That would fully fund the cost when we anticipate having all fourteen firefighters onboard for the full fiscal year in FY26. That would fully cover the need. Another approach would be a reduced override, and then looking at ways to generate new revenues to, so that over a period of years, as the full cost of the, of the fourteen firefighters comes online, we have a, a long-term plan to reach that goal. It's not fully funded in that first year, but we, we generate some new revenues, and we look at our revenue estimates, and we look at the stabilization fund as a mechanism to provide a buffer in terms of what's going on with the economy and inflation and wage rates, so that we are confident we have a plan that is not going to cause a big problem when we get to fiscal year twenty-six, when the full cost of those fourteen firefighters hits. And then finally, you know, is there a way that we could hire fourteen firefighters without an override? Yes, absolutely. It would require cutting budgets in other departments. It could be a combination of reducing other department budgets and increasing revenue estimates, and that would mean, you know, very little flexibility to address any future strategic planning priorities, and potentially future reductions in force or layoffs if we have a downturn in the economy, or if inflation drives up other fixed costs beyond our revenue growth. As you can see, I'm not really enthusiastic about that third option. So just, this is a sort of a walkthrough of, I, I know the stabilization fund combined with an override, it's, it's a new concept for me, so let's sort of walk through what it might look like. And, and this is option one, an override of one point five million. We would have an appropriation based on our estimates to make six hundred thousand of that one point five million available in FY24. So it would be voted at April Town Meeting, voted on the ballot in, in May for the FY24 budget, and it would be a one point five million dollar override. We'd be raising all of that money in the first year. Six hundred thousand would be made available for expenditure in that first year, and the balance of nine hundred thousand would be deposited into that stabilization fund. Year two, as we talked about, the, the cost estimate, assuming seven firefighters hired FY24, seven hired FY25, we're getting close to, you know, we're at one, one million three hundred and eighty thousand, so most of that would be made available for expenditure in FY25. Hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars would be appropriated into the stabilization fund, and so that would bring the balance in the stabilization fund up to over a million dollars. And, you know, the, as I mentioned, the nice thing about that is, if we were to have a recession, or if we were to have inflation driving our fixed costs to a point that we can't fit that full one point six million dollars in FY26 into the budget with conserve, with maintaining conservative revenue estimates and meeting all of the other department needs, we could draw from that stabilization fund. Now, you know, I want to talk about, or at least I want to mention that our mantra is recurring funding sources for recurring costs. So that's, that's where we need to get. We don't want to have a funding plan that is continually relying on a one-time funding source, and hopefully, we won't need this stabilization fund to meet our, you know, minimum needs. But again, it's a, it provides a buffer, a cushion, so that if we can't get there with recurring revenues, we have a, we have a place to go. And again, the way I, you know, one way to think about it that I think is very helpful is, you know, we are potentially heading into a recession, and when we look at our local receipts, they've grown each and every year since two thousand and twelve. Every year, they've gone up for ten years, but before that, they did dip for a couple of years. It took three, they dipped from, I want to say something like two thousand nine to two thousand ten, and it was three years to get back to where they were, and then they steadily grew. And I think that's, that's probably, you know, we never know when a recession is going to come, or how deep it's going to be, or how long it's going to last, but this stabilization fund would be very useful if we hit a recession like that, where the revenues go down and they stay, and it takes a couple of years for us to recover. So that was looking at a one point five million dollar override. Nine hundred and fifty, a nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar override is an amount that the finance staff and I feel is a, an amount that is sort of a reasonable compromise between, we, we don't want to increase the tax burden any more than we have to, but the, you know, on the other end, the balancing factor is that we want to maintain budget flexibility, we want to be able to be resilient if there is a recession, if there is inflation, and we want to be able to incrementally continue to address other department needs as well. So this nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars is an amount that we feel comfortable, even if a recession were to hit, you know, we can get through that without having layoffs. I can't promise that. You know, again, this is, this is a forecast, but it's, it's an amount that I feel is, is, is a reasonable balance. So with a, an override of this amount, it's a reduced tax, pros and cons, and I think I, I'll go back, because I didn't review the pros and cons for the million five option. But for the nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar option, the pros are a reduced tax impact. It ensures full funding of new positions for FY25 and 26. It gives us three years to prepare a plan to secure recurring funding source for the remaining six hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's needed to fund the, the full cost in FY26. And potentially, a reduced override increases the likelihood of approval. You know, I can't speak for Town Meeting, I can't speak for the voters, but logically, one would think that if we're able to show the voters that we're able to absorb some of this cost without an override and reduce the amount of override, one hopes that that might increase the chances of it passing. The, in terms of pros and cons, the disadvantage of, of a nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar override as opposed to a one point five million dollar override is, the reduced override provides less budget flexibility for FY25 and beyond. So on the flip side, the larger override, one point five million, full funding guaranteed with no risk, it maintains maximum budget flexibility to address challenges and priorities in future years. The cons are greater tax impact and possibly an increased chance that the override is not approved. Let me, let me stop there for discussion before I, we start talking about other department needs.
Yes, Mr. Patterson. So there's a, a parallel that the town is using, and that was for covering special needs costs, and particularly the out-of-placement costs, which are huge. These are students that can't be handled by our staff and facilities here in Falmouth, and that would go up and down. And, you know, you got to balance the budget. So when you have a spike, which we often did, especially when families from outside of Falmouth moved in and brought a child in who had high needs, you know, that would be a hit to your budget, and they created the stabilization fund to try to smooth that out. And I think that's exactly what this would be doing, is helping us, you know, avoid that. And then I want to say the other thing is this, you know, our housing crisis is going to make, make the, make the level of staffing of the fire department volatile, you know, for the foreseeable future, because we know, the statistics are clear, that on Cape Cod, you know, we're losing a thousand families a year, and our firefighters are likely to be families raising children. You know, we see it in the schools department, and the number of school-aged children is going down. So the, the impacts on this are, are big, and I, I think there's a lot of merit to using a stabilization fund to try to help smooth this out, not just in the next few years, as we're trying to transition up to a, a larger staff, but in future years, where the volatility is likely to continue.
Right.
Mr. Brown?
I would agree with that, and also, I'd like to give some thought to what would be the actual impact to the average homeowner. We used to base it on a four hundred thousand dollar house, or we should probably base it on a seven hundred thousand dollar house.
Yep.
And say, you know, it's going to raise your taxes with thirty-four dollars versus, you know, forty-two dollars, or whatever it is. Not that much difference, but there's a big difference to our budget capacity and our flexibility, as you pointed out.
Absolutely, and I, I think Ed is probably pulling up the tax impact now. I'll give him a few minutes to do that, but we can go over those tax impact numbers today.
Any other comments?
I think it is really important, I'm just, I'm going to agree with Mr. Brown, to, to actually come up with a hard number, and what that really does mean to families based on their home assessment.
So the, in your strategic planning sessions that we had in the fall, when we, we were talking about all of the town's needs, and we talked about the fire department staffing needs, the board, a couple of the board members asked about, you know, well, what about, you know, all of the needs for all of the other departments? So the, the chair asked me to address that this morning as well. I've listed here just a sample of needs that were identified by department heads. I had asked them, you know, based on that, those strategic planning sessions, I asked the department heads to identify their budget priorities that are above and beyond what we could do within a two and a half percent budget. And I've listed here what I think are, you know, some of the more compelling options, but I, I need to tell you that I really have not had the time to work through each of these items in the way that I would need to before putting them in a budget, whether it's an override budget or within a regular budget. You know, I, I have an understanding of all of them, but in, before we could act on them, I would really, you know, need to get into the details and have more of a dialogue, so that I could rate the relative merits and priorities of the different department needs. But just running through them real quickly, the conservation department, we have the most wetlands of any community in Massachusetts, so, you know, I know when I first arrived here, I thought we had very robust staffing for our conservation department, but then when you look at the number of wetlands that we have, and the number of applications that we receive, you get a very different picture. So we currently have a half-time position, which we have filled twice with very qualified individuals who then left for a full-time position. So there's both a need there that's about just, we need the additional staff hours, but it's also a retention problem. It's not a very attract, a part-time position is not, you know, it doesn't have benefits and isn't, we, we can't expect that we're going to hold anyone in that position for a length of time. There's a solid waste and recycling coordinator position that you've heard from the solid waste advisory committee. They're very high on that position. I know Scott has mentioned that he would love to see that, that position made full-time. We have a terrific employee in that half-time position that I believe would be interested in a full-time position. So that's one we'd want to look at. Our custodial staffing is very, very lean, and they're, you know, they're limited as to what they can do because of the number of buildings that they need to cover. So that's one that's pretty high on my list. Electrician, we have one who's going to retire. He's fantastic. We could really use two, and it would be really nice to be able to train, for him to be able to train someone before he leaves. A coastal resiliency coordinator has been identified through strategic planning. We've heard from the community about it. We do have the sustainability coordinator position in this FY24 budget, but that's another need that's been identified. Our assessing department is very lean, and actually, Ed Centio did a comparative analysis while working in Yarmouth that showed that, I believe, Falmouth had the lowest cost of all departments on the Cape on a, on a workload measure, when you look at the number of properties and parcels. And the, the assessor has, Tricia Favouli, has identified a, a need for an additional clerical position, so that she and the appraisal staff can focus more on that high-value activity. And a chief procurement officer. We don't have a centralized process at this point for procurement compliance and review and support, and that's a position that we could really use. So, you know, I, I do want to say that we have made good incremental progress on other department needs in recent years, and depending on the, on the option that the board chooses for fire department staffing, we, and depending on what happens with the economy, we can continue to make progress on these needs. The FY24 budget, as you know, includes a significant new recurring investment in affordable housing, the sustainability coordinator position, an assistant superintendent of parks, increasing the diversity equity inclusion officer position from part-time to full-time, increasing the hours of operation at the East Falmouth Library, and vehicle and body worn camera systems for the police department. So we are making, you know, we have been and we are, with this budget, making progress on those other department needs. And as I said, we may be able to continue to make incremental progress on those needs in, you know, the next three to five years, if we, if we're going to hire those fourteen firefighters, if we have an override of at least nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, if we don't have a severe recession, and if we don't have severe inflation. So in conclusion, recurring funding is needed for the additional fire, oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Can, can I just sort of summarize to see if, if we're on the same page?
Yes.
Town Meeting approved the building and staffing of the Hatchville Station, and that is moving forward.
Yes.
Number two, this board has a policy to support a six-station model, unless or until we combine North Falmouth and West Falmouth. Okay? So we have committed to a six-station model. And then the third thing I'm hearing is that we cannot hire enough firefighters for all stations within the current budget and levy limit. Is that?
Absolutely correct.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay. So it will come back to this board to decide how we're going to meet these needs, how we're going to stay with our policy of six stations, because that's what we voted, how we move forward and come up with a plan to staff the stations, including Hatchville, and then three, what is that going to actually look like? And then three, what is that going to actually look like in terms of the funding stores? Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you. So concluding remarks. Recurring funding is needed for this additional staffing. Options include putting the entire amount of the funding on an override and using the fire, using A, this would be a new fire department stabilization fund. I want to make clear, that's not a fund that exists at this time. So we, that would be an article at town meeting to create that stabilization fund. So one option is to put the entire amount of the cost of hiring the 14 firefighters on an override and using that stabilization fund to pay for one-time costs and overtime in the first two to three years. Another option is to put a portion of the 1.5 million dollar cost on an override and seek new revenue sources and build the fire department stabilization fund to buy more time to fit the full cost of the new staff into the budget in a sustainable manner. And the third option is to cut services provided by other departments to fund the additional fire department positions. And I just want to emphasize that we do have a very clear plan so that we can say to the voters, if we are to pursue an override, that all funds raised by an override will be used for the purpose of paying fire department staffing costs.
Peter, do you have a, do you have a timeline on when you're going to have the rest of the information about the other department needs? You said you hadn't had enough time to really dig into that, to make the presentation or the argument for those added positions or time positions. Do you have any idea of how long that's going to take and when we'll have a clear picture?
Um, you know, it, I can get that done within a period of a month to two, but that's not going to be in time for, in April and May town meeting action, because the warrant, the warrant closes on January 30th.
In our meetings with Mr. Johnson Staub, we have an idea of the needs of the departments. I was very clear when I, when Mr. Johnson Staub was preparing for this presentation, that I just asked him to cull through and come up with perhaps the most important at the time. And as we look at incrementally, I wanted to know what their priorities were. And I think this list is a, a pretty good reflection of that.
Madam Chair, I understand that. I just.
We will continue to look at that.
I just thought it was important to make that statement.
Absolutely.
So people didn't anticipate this being ready for town, the next town meeting.
Agreed.
So that's, thank you for clarifying that on the record.
Mr. Brown?
So at our previous meeting, budget, preliminary budget discussion, I was very in favor of assessing these other needs and including them in the override so it'd be more comprehensive. But I'm kind of changing my tune now because we really do have a clear picture of what's needed in the fire department staffing and the costs, and it's very well-articulated. The other items are not so clear. We know that it's a clear need, but we don't know the number. So I don't think it would be fair to try to rush and hurry and include that in this override, which I feel like is imperative now. So I'm going to change my previous position and say that maybe more than one override is needed in this town. Maybe this one is ready to go now. Maybe we have to do some more thinking and come back in another year and say, here's some more needs. We're going to have to trust in the voters to understand that we're bringing a clear need to them and, and trust that they'll be supportive.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Patterson?
I think, I agree. I think there needs to be a pretty clear cost-benefit analysis so that basically people can re, can appreciate why they need to pay a little bit more in their real estate taxes to cover any particular issues to the staff. Just, it makes a lot of sense to me.
Right.
So let me understand you, Mr. Patterson. Are you talking specifically about the fire department?
Oh, I'm very comfortable with the fire department.
Okay.
I think this is an essential service that the town needs, and the volatility is there. It's going to continue because of the housing issue and the cost of living. So we need to have a way of kind of covering staffing, and it's not fair to push the burden of insufficient staffing onto the firefighters themselves. And in fact, you know, the quality of service will degrade as you tire people out.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I have another comment. I brought a dredging priority list today, and if you just briefly take a look at it, you'll see that the, the top 20 priorities don't even have permits yet. These are needs that have become identified, but we haven't even developed a budget. What we find at the waterways committees, every time we have people come in and say, hey, I live on Waquay Bay, I can't get my sailboat out, the channel is not deep enough, what can we do? Well, we've been talking about that channel for four and a half years, and we're not able to really move forward because the funding just isn't there. And what Mr. Fraser often says is, it's a big project. We're going to have to identify a funding source. And they try to get grants and things and, you know, it's just really, we're constantly falling behind on our dredging. And now we've got to a point where we've really identified a clear need, but no funding. So that's another whole thing that we need to look into, just pulling it out. The beaches also, we don't really have a beach nourishment program. Some people have suggested, coastal geologist friend of mine, Jeff Williams, suggested that there's no reason why we couldn't import sand from Lawrence and Lynch or, you know, any other place that has clean washed sand. The clean washed sand is just about the right-sized granules, and it's used in construction, but could be easily used on our beaches if we could have a maintenance program. We should identify what the cost of that is because we're really not keeping up with our beach quality. We're inviting people to come here because it's a beach community, but there's a huge need for expenditure there that hasn't really even identified.
Part of the problem there, Doug, is that what, what they're dredging, we can't reuse.
Right.
And we have to, we have to find a, a source to get rid of that, even though it's not a non-hazardous. Not everybody's taking dredgings, you know, for clean fill. And other communities and places, they can reuse some of the stuff that they dredge, put it right back on the beach. We just don't have that.
And, and this priority list is going to have a lot of that.
Right.
Because the stuff that's in the embankments is muckies.
And the overburden from this, there's no, there's no monetary value. So it's, it's cost out and then cost to, to ship it somewhere and then to, to land it somewhere. That's, that's where your funding problems come. If we could pump it and put it right back, it'd be a lot less expensive. You just, the material's not, it's not good coming out. I mean, it's not, it's not hazardous.
Yep.
It's just not suitable for beach nourishment.
It's not valuable.
No. There's no, there's no monetary value to it.
Mr. Patterson?
You know, another factor that's been hitting us in the same area is the availability of dredge, the timing of trying to get the dredge in, when it's allowed to be dredged, and using it effectively. It seems to me, we've suffered every year for the reason that we, we don't carry, we don't have a stabilization fund for dredging, quite honestly, where we can move that money from year to year because we don't have the equipment that can actually do the work. So that's another issue that I think needs to be addressed and would help to smooth out this cost and make sure that we don't get continually behind so that we never catch up.
That's a great point. And, you know, we just brought that up at the last, a couple of meetings it's been discussed. And there is a need for some sort of stabilization fund. Mr. Johnson Staub pointed out that in the interim, we could potentially consider the capital stabilization fund that already exists. And maybe that will come into play because there are some projects that are already, the permitting alone is spiraling out of control. But I just wanted to bring this up as an example of the things that we're not yet really dealing with. But we, we, we know that the economy's never going to stay solid forever. It's historically 20 years up, 20 years down, and we've been lucky for a long time. You know, it just can't stay good forever. So we'd be.
Doug, Doug, I think you're right. I, I think that without, without rejuvenating our beaches, it's going to keep people from coming here. That's why people come here and spend their money and want to live here and, and raise family. And this, this is something that has to be addressed sooner than later.
I do have one idea about the spoils from dredging because we're also, I, I hope we're going to consider using a transfer station to use for a composting facility because I know Cape Cod Commission has identified the need for two on Cape Cod, one in our upper Cape area and one in the lower Cape area. I would love to see that site developed for composting, and maybe the dredge spoils could be regularly taken there and integrated into the compost. We had a headquarters where we could know we could bring the stuff. At least we would have a cost.
Certainly screen the aggregate aspect and shells out of it and then use the, the organic material towards that, I would imagine.
Yeah. And I took the tour of Nantucket's composting facility. It's amazing how much stuff can actually be composted.
Is this not a county-wide kind of service that maybe there could be share with other municipalities?
Yeah. And maybe the county would share in the, the cost of developing it because it's been identified by Cape Cod Commission as a regional need, so.
It's important. Thank you.
Going cost.
It is. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Well, I would make a motion that we consider recommending an override to fund the fire department at this time, as described by Mr. Johnson Staub.
I second that.
And can we do an amount?
1.5 million.
Second.
Can we, can we discuss how much it's going to cost households with 950?
I think that's a good idea. And, and I want to go back to thinking about whether we're going to be going for 1.5 or if we're going to do the incremental, meet in the middle, 950. I think we need to talk about that as well.
First set of documents, sorry for the size, is for the 950, and then I'll pass around the one.
Okay.
1.5.
And I'll tell you what my concern is. Firstly, moving forward, we need an override. I think the board has been saying that for a while, correct?
I have.
And I don't want to say that it is coming out of Mr. Johnson Staub's office because you've mentioned it. I believe Mr. Patterson has mentioned it as well. My concern is if we go for 1.5 and it doesn't pass because of that amount, we're going to be in big trouble with fire station staffing. So I think we also have to consider the best way of encouraging town meeting and voters to pass an override. And 1.5, in my mind, might be a lot. But again, I'll have to look at the numbers based on both estimates.
Nancy, I would, I would mention.
Mr. Patterson?
To your point.
Mm-hmm.
That over the last few years, I mean, the need for fire services has been pretty high in the citizens' mind, and we have not failed to, to support the efforts to cover those increased services, if you will, or provide robust, sufficiently robust services. So I'm, I think we do need to make sure the case is a strong one, and people understand why it's going to improve their quality of life and, or at least the probability of quality of life. But that's the challenge in my mind. I think this town will be receptive to increased costs to provide the services that they really need and want.
I agree. My, my question is whether it's 1.5 or 950. That's my question, Sam. It's not whether it's an override or not.
And I think I'd like to, not today, but we should take a look at other towns across the Cape. I mean, Sandwich is like 13.6 per thousand. I don't even know if they have free trash pickup. But they do have a beach nourishment program. And if you look, I saw in the newspaper last week that in spite of that last big storm we had at the King Tide, which did a lot of damage to our beaches, Sandwich's Town Neck Beach held up pretty well because of the nourishment projects that they've been doing. So it's a pretty good example of spending the money and getting some value.
Hey, listen, people are smart. If it's well explained and all the information is there, they know what the right thing to do is and what they need. It just has to be well explained and well presented.
They want to know it's not being wasted.
That's exactly right.
Right.
So if you like, I'll just, you know, a suggestion is, you know, you've got a lot of numbers that you're looking at. Thank you, Ed, for the quick work on the, using the State Department website to generate tax impact estimates. So this is based on our most current tax rate, FY23. And as Sam alluded to, you, you know, if you want to look at something that's a typical single-family house, believe it or not, you probably want to look at $750,000 or something thereabouts. And what this is showing is that for the override of $950,000, it would be a $45 impact. And that's for a house valued at seven, assessed at $750,000. And for that same $750,000 property, for a, a, an override of 1.5 million, that impact goes up from $45 to $67.50. So, I mean, I, I guess I'll just sort of express what you already know and are probably thinking that, you know, on the one hand, that's not a huge difference, right? But those who don't like having taxes raised will rightly point out, this is on top of a two and a half percent increase every year. And, you know, and for many households that have high-value real estate that don't necessarily have a lot of income. So I, I don't want to at all diminish the difference between the override, 950 and 1.5. It, it is a mod, the, you know, the actual annual tax impact difference is pretty modest. It absolutely is. But as Chair Taylor pointed out, and I'm not trying to steer, I'm really not trying to steer you one way or another, but there's the reality of what the difference is in the tax impact, and then there's the politics. And you know the politics better than I do, but part of that politics is just the sticker price, right? So what are the prospects of success at town meeting and on the ballot for an override of 1.5 million versus 950,000? Maybe there's no difference. I, I, you know, I honestly don't know. We will identify what the tax burden is. Maybe most people will say, geez, fire services are really important. I'm willing to pay that at 1.5. But those are considerations that run through my mind as I weigh the options.
And with the increase of two and a half percent each year.
Right.
So I just, I just think we have to look at it, you know, in a, a now shot, but also moving forward.
Those are also the same people that voted for the six, the, the new fire station as well. I mean, that was voted and approved.
I agree.
So with, you can't have one without the other.
I agree.
Although we didn't really articulate it clearly on the last override, it was not really well done, fortunately. But this one, I think, will be better. I would say that the people that are going to vote no to the 1.5 are also going to vote no to the 950.
Out of general purpose, out of principle.
And just say, no new taxes, and, you know.
And you're not increasing the benefit to my house.
Personally, yeah, right.
Because you're basically providing services to the western half of the town.
Yeah.
So that's something. But there's that whole issue of empathy, you know. But I think if properly presented and, you know, and all the factors are laid out, because this is a complicated kind of decision, I think people will support it.
I think so.
Mr. Johnson Staub?
Yeah, just a, a process point. So the board does need to make a decision, a final decision by January 30th. I, I think it'd be very helpful, you know, it sounds like there's support for an override. And I just want to say, if you want to take some more time and make a final decision on the amount of that override on January 30th, you know, we can, we can give you that time. We can provide you, I think the only new information that maybe we haven't really talked about that we can provide is that comparison to other communities and the, you know, what is the average tax bill and the tax rate for other Cape communities now versus, you know, and how, what it would look like with this override.
And maybe versus level of service.
Madam Chair, I would, I would certainly entertain that because I'd like to talk to some people about it in the meantime.
Can I just ask if there are any comments from the finance committee?
Well, this would come to us anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Whatever the override might be.
Right.
We had an override, and that was what, $38 per thousand, or, or per, per average? I think that was the last one. We've had four overrides in 30 years here. Two of them failed. And other towns, Yarmouth, for example, has had 31 in 30 years, and 17 have failed. So there's a 50% fail rate here. It seems pretty natural. So I think there's a danger there, going for the top number versus a, a smaller number. There might be firefighter fatigue, so to speak, out there. The average is one thing. A lot of the homes are at the higher end, so people are going to have higher than the 45 if you go with the 950 or with the other one. So it's going to, the, the impact's going to be a little greater. We don't, and I know a lot of people at the higher end are the ones having trouble, inherited homes, they can't afford the taxes on them. So they're having to do Airbnb, things like that. So that, that, that's the only thing I think about when I think of override and the impacts on the public.
Mr. Brown? And then I'll go to you, Mr. Patterson.
I wasn't.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you put your hand up. Mr. Patterson?
I would say that in my neighborhood, though, I don't see that trend that it's the people that inherit the homes that convert over to Airbnb. There are really people coming in and saying, you know, I'd love that they have a vacation home, and I can offset that cost by doing Airbnb for the rest of the time when I'm not down there, right? That's the dynamic I see in terms of the turnover of properties. So I guess So I guess question, then, is that a significant trend or not? But can I also make one other point? When we sewered Little Pond Sewer Service Area, we basically offered, you know, to help homeowners do reverse mortgage when they didn't have the incomes to really pay those modest increases due to the betterment costs. And I feel like, and by the way, I, I think we should probably get this backed up, Trish Fubuli, but I don't think there were a lot of people that actually took advantage of that. And in fact, the, the argument I heard against it, well, oh gee, then, then my, then my children, you know, will have to bear the cost of that deferred payment, if you will, to the sale of the property, and I don't want that to happen to my children. And that was the reason, less than I don't have the income to cover those costs. So it's, it's not, it's a nuanced thing, it's going to be different for different people, but I think there are ways that we can help people out that are on fixed incomes and are really going to be stressed, you know, by this additional cost. And so I would like to make sure that we, make sure that people understand there are options in that situation.
What, what are those options, Mr. Johnson Staub?
The options for people who have difficulty paying their taxes?
Yes, yeah, that basically is the...
Yeah, so Ed might be more familiar with them, with the details than I am, but essentially there are options for elderly individuals of a certain income, there are options for veterans and blind individuals of a certain income, but we really do not have a, you know, for folks who are not over the age of 65, is it, there really isn't a, a program that I'm aware of.
State program, there's a state circuit breaker program looking at your water payments as well as your tax level, real estate tax levels, and then there's...
Is that, excuse me, Ed, is that only for individuals over age 65, the circuit breaker?
No. Oh, I think it is, yes.
Well, that's going to be some important information to get out as this message gets out. I mean...
There's also a cir, excuse me, a circuit breaker that is being talked about at the local level as well.
Because, you know...
Residential tax exemption, which is, you know, very difficult to implement, but is also another option.
You know, we look across the table at each other, and...
Mr. Zalinski, go ahead.
We look at each other across the table and say, well, that, it doesn't really look like a lot of money, but to some people it is a lot of money. And they, those people, we have to address their, their concerns as well.
Could we adopt that circuit breaker, the local option?
It's not yet, it's being discussed.
Could we... But the... Could we do a deferment for people that are in fixed income?
So that is, there is, there's a menu of options that are already available through state law and that the assessor's office is good about informing people of. So there isn't necessarily local action. There may be some adjustments that, that we could vote locally based on, again, what the, the options that the state allows. But the, you know, the big new one would be the residential exemption, which we've talked about, is, you know, we really need to have a, a full discussion. It's very, it's a very complicated issue.
So I need to, I need to go back. We do have a motion on the table. We have an emotion and a second. Could you restate your motion?
I, I would move that we submit to the voters the override request for 1.5 million. And the reason I'm still going to stay with that is because...
I'm seconding that.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead and finish.
And the reason is because I don't want to go halfway again with the fire department, and also Peter's point about, you know, building a stabilization fund at this time, I think is really important because we don't know what the economy's going to bring, but we know it's been really good for a really long time. So I don't want to be on the edge of success and then not really be able to succeed with the 950, because I think that's going to be, I'd like to hear from the chief if you think that's too much of a compromise to be fully effective in staffing.
I think that everything that's...
Yes, please, chief. Could you introduce yourself, please?
Yes, Chief Timothy Smith. You know, I, I did want to comment, but I think that this approach not being part of the first override, I think that everything that's been done to work this up and to provide the information to the board based on all that we've discussed over the last, you know, few years, and I think this is a great, you know, segue into, you know, improving the staffing, and I think that, you know, the option one, you know, in, in our discussion seems to be the best approach to get the, get the money and to go forward with the 14 personnel in order to keep up with these timelines. And, you know, and I welcome the support, as, as I've said in the past, and I appreciate Mr. Johnson Staub and, you know, Ed's quick work of late to assist us in this goal.
Would you say that, would you feel confident in being able to be successful with the 950, or would you feel a little apprehensive about that, as I do?
I, I think that not knowing, you know, how, you know, the, the other monies would be raised, I think that the 950, if we were to do that approach, we could get the partial work done, but if we didn't have that remaining funding, then we're not reaching that goal of trying to ensure that we have the staffing at the start of the shift.
Mr. Johnson Staub?
Yeah, I, I just want to clarify that under both of those options, we, the chief would be authorized to fill all 14 positions right away. So the, respectfully, that, you know, the question isn't really between the two, the 950 and the million five, the chief's going to get his firefighters. So he's not any less certain about getting the firefighters under those two options. Where the, the trade-offs come in is all of the other town departments, and, you know, as you mentioned before, you know, what happens if there's a, a big downturn in the economy? You know, we could be looking at town-wide, okay, we need to find some money, you know, where are we going to cut back? Is it, you know, is it, do we go without capital for a couple of years to, to weather the storm and, and therefore protect the operating budget so that no department is hurt? Is it, you know, so steep that even that's not enough, and we have to look at, okay, you know, police department hasn't been filling their positions, so we're going to cut that budget, and, you know, looking all across the departments? But either, I just want to emphasize that in, in terms of evaluating the size of the override, I would suggest the, the question is about budget sustainability and flexibility, not about are we sure we're going to get the firefighters?
So either way, you would get the firefighters, it's that the 1.5 would cover other additional needs, which we haven't really dug into as much.
Yeah, well, let's be careful, because you know how people jump on phrases. So the, the, the new money's going to go to the fire department?
Yes.
For sure. But the fact that all of it is secured with a new funding source means that the non, all of the non earmarked money, there's more of that available for other departments.
There's more flexibility to meet more of the, the board's priorities.
The 1.5, excuse me, the 1.5 fully funds the need for the fire department, clearly. The 950 leaves us scrambling to find other funding sources because we know we need the 1.5. So it's whether or not we want to ask the voters to fully fund this fire initiative?
That doesn't sound right.
No. The fire department is going to be fully funded either way, correct?
Correct.
The fire department's going to be fully funded either way. So, and, and, and let me amplify that. The, if, you know, we're, we're talking about budget flexibility. This is, right, this is all about, you know, the what-if scenarios and if there's a big downturn and if FY '25, FY '26, we hit a real rough patch, right? So what does that look like? I'm assuming that the select board is going to say, wherever we have to cut, to me, wherever we have to cut, we need the firefighters because we've made a commitment to six stations and we have a sixth station and we want to staff them all, so look somewhere else to make cuts.
I think...
Go ahead, Ms. Scott Price.
Just wanted to also point out, in the option two override plan that was presented, that's the 950, there are places where money has been potentially earmarked to make up the difference between the 1.5. So it's, it's not necessarily scrambling to find it, it's saying that we think, we assume, we project that these funds will be available to make up that difference, but then it means that those funds aren't available for something else.
Right. Okay, we have a, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Aye.
I'm, I think since we don't have to make a decision on the number today, I would like more time to think about the actual number. But I do agree with the first part of Mr. Brown's motion that, that we should move forward with the override, but just not with the amount today.
Okay, so, but his motion was on the 1.5, so that motion does not carry, and it sounds like what we'd like to do is continue to look at the numbers, that I, I don't hear anyone is opposed to an override. I think we're, we're hung up on numbers. Is that correct?
I'd like another, I'd like at least to the 30th to be able to talk to some people and see what their input is and how they would be affected by it, and I think it's a small ask to just push this off to the 30th to make the decision.
Is, is the 30th reasonable or the 23rd?
I need a decision by the 30th. That's, you know, if you want an override, I have to have the decision by the 30th.
The meeting on the 30th?
Yep.
Okay, so that will need to be on the agenda.
Right, so it, it absolutely does not need to be tonight, just know that when you get to the 30th, if you ask me the same question, you know, the answer's going to be no, we need to decide tonight.
Can, can we also at that meeting, or before that maybe, outline what the deferment options might be, if there are some, if we have any ability to say people that are on a fixed income can defer this until sale of their home or whatever we might like to do?
Absolutely, yep.
Does that have to be a motion? Do you need a motion on that?
I don't, I don't think we have to, I don't think we need another motion. We just said one motion, it didn't pass, but the, the consensus of the board is that we are considering an override, and we will have a decision on the 30th as to what that number will be. It'll be option one or option two.
I think Mr. Johnson Staub has also been asked to look at local services at other places, so I'd like to see those.
I'd, agreed.
We won't have that, though, for the 30th.
Can you clarify with that last point, Angela, what is it?
Yeah, I think there was a question, maybe it was from Mr. Brown or Mr. Patterson, I don't remember, about looking at the taxes of other towns.
Other communities.
Yes, yeah.
I think that's important.
Yep, agreed.
I'd like to see those numbers.
You'll have that.
Thank you.
Just other Cape towns.
Other Cape, other Cape towns. Yes, just, just a forward comparison.
I'm not sure we should have...
I have all 351 up, so you don't need all.
Mr. Patterson, go ahead.
I'm not sure we don't need that in context. I mean, when I look at the real estate taxes that my son pays on a property that's nowhere near the same value as my property is, he's paying 50% more. And that's in Sunnington, that's not a fancy suburb. So, you know, I'm not sure it isn't a, a good idea to give us some perspective about, you know, New England.
I'll give you 351 towns, but I'll sort it so that you can see the Cape towns.
Yeah.
Subcater.
By region.
And you can look at the rest.
Perfect.
It's just a snapshot, though, because we don't know what their fee structure is, you know, we might charge more for building permits or, you know.
That's a good point.
Right, and that, that is a very good point. There are, and, and there are a couple of other factors that make comparison difficult. The, for example, the residential exemption, I believe, Ed, correct me if I'm wrong, when the state publishes, you know, we can get the, we can get the tax rate for every community, but in terms of average tax bill, which I would argue is a better measure of the tax burden, for those communities that have a residential exemption, they don't publish average tax bill because it's, there's no apples-to-apples way to compare that to communities that don't have a residential exemption. So that's a limiting factor. Another one is, you know, again, it happens to be Barnstable, but Barnstable has fire districts. So that's not including the taxes. Water districts is another one. Sandwich has a water district, so their water cost is not included in their, in their tax.
And other regions of the state may not have the same needs that we have in a coastal environment, too, so, so you got to, apples-to-apples is what we're looking at here. So I mean, you compare things to, you know, mid-Massachusetts, they don't have the same challenges that we do that have other ancillary costs. I think that it'd be more descriptive to have our local that have, you know, the same, the same needs and...
And we have local...
Services that we provide are the same issues, coastal resilience, all the other things that we're going to have to have money for later on or add into it.
Even if, even if we have a statewide list, we really need to have a Cape list.
That's what I would be more concerned with.
It also...
Right? Well, because you have, it's, the same economy locally and, and industry and all of that is more descriptive of what we need.
Yeah.
So that's what I would be looking at anyway.
Okay, anything else for the good of the board? Anything else you'd like us to look at or consider or have information on as we move forward?
Well, I'd just like to keep thinking about the fact that when we had the last recession, seven, eight, nine, our town really stripped down and really everybody tightened up their budgets, they threw out all their stuff that they didn't need and really just got by on bare bones, and honestly, we've been doing it ever since. So there's a lot of things that we're really not doing that we could be doing if we had a budget that was more realistic. We're so used to just saying, we can't do it, where's the money going to come from? I just think we're missing a lot of opportunities because we're just so trained to be broke all the time, so.
Some people are broke all the time, Doug, and those are the people that are going to be most affected by an override.
Absolutely right.
So you're...
I'm just missing that at all.
Am I hearing you say you're talking about capacity to, to get things done? In other words...
Right.
Hiring more, and I know that's been a concern of Mr. Patterson's for years, that we do say no because we don't have the capacity.
Correct.
Correct.
And I'm not talking about for this firefighter...
No, 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 I'm talking, I'm talking town-wise. I'm talking town-wise.
Right.
I think that's what I hear. Anything else for the good of the board?
I'll just say I think this is very well presented.
Indeed, yes.
Agreed.
Good job.
Agreed.
Good hire, too.
Good picture.
So far.
Indeed.
He's got a, you know, he's got a come-out.
He's tough.
Okay.
That's the nature of the beast.
I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move that.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
[music] 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 [music]